The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Con, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed. Alderman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Rice, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Con. Twenty present.
Quarant being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We would dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Michael Frame from United Food and Commercial Workers, Lou Hamilton from Centrex Strategies, Demetrius Alfred from Local 73 Firefighters, and Joyce Roberts, school board member.
Oh.
My constituent Jim Merkel with the South Side News.
Welcome. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Every Friday, I always introduce Frederick Cersei with the plums and pipe filters, and I think I do that because I want it to be recognized that they're always there to assist us in any way they can in helping the community, so again, I want to recognize him.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, members of board, my honored guests this morning is Mrs. Sheila Jones with Amerin Missouri, Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guests Keith Taylor and Matt Hans of the Labor Department.
We also are very grateful and also thankful that we are being joined today by the Coral Fellows. Please stand up. These are some of our young leaders that are coming up in Coral Fellows, and we appreciate you, the work that you've done thus far, and wish you all of the luck in the future. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thanks for joining us. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, I just strolled in. I'd like to welcome as my special guest the Vice President of the Firefighters Institute of racial equality Percy Green III.
Welcome Percy.
And as well, Mr. President, I'd also like to have as my special guest, South Side white progressives who think they know what's in the best interest of black communities more than black aldermen and black communities. They are also my special guests.
All right, thank you, thank you. We also have with us our two new interns, could you all stand up? I want to get this right. Ms. Kate Palokanis, Kate Palokanis, she is from the Brown School at Washington University, thank you for joining us. And Jody Goodman, Jody Goodman is from Brown School University also, let's give her a big round of applause. Thank you both, our newest interns. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up. Alderman from the tenth, hold on, Alderman from the thirteenth.
President, members of the board, I'm sorry, I was out, I would like to have as my special guests Keith Taylor and Jeff Hans from the St. Louis, Kansas City Carpenter's Regional Council. Thank you.
And Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of board, I'm getting a little hard of hearing these days. I want to introduce as my special guest, Mr. Alfred Demetrius, President of Local 73 Firefighters.
Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, we're gathered here on January eighteenth, it was on this day in 1896, the first x-ray machine appeared, it was also on this day in 1975, the Jeffersons moved up to the east side and debuted their own TV show, for all you folks as old as me, but more important, it's Winnie the Pooh Day, and we are blessed to have with us the stud double from the Christopher Farabam movie who played Winnie the Pooh, the alderman from the twenty-third. Thank you very much.
Approval of the minutes.
There are no approval of the minutes for this.
Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed into Alderman's mailboxes.
We would dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 222, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment authorizing and directing the city to issue and sell its general obligation bonds in various series in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed forty million, of which no more than six million in aggregate principal amount shall be issued annually for the purpose of stabilizing within the limits described in the city's proposition, Neighborhood Stabilization Ordinance containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 223, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Circuit Attorney to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the United States Attorney's Office, Eastern District of Missouri providing for cross-jurisdiction over crimes that take place in and around St. Louis, authorizing one or more qualifying St. Louis Assistant Attorneys, Circuit Attorneys, to be assigned to the United States Attorney's Office, Eastern District of Missouri, as Special Assistant United States Attorneys to facilitate the investigation and prosecution of federal offenses involving the possession or use of firearm containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 224, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance establishing a dig-once policy governing where, when, and how often construction and evacuation that disrupts access to the right-of-way, including the flow of vehicle and pedestrian traffic may occur. Board Bill 225, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, an ordinance adding a new chapter under Title 25, the Building Code, to be known as small wireless facilities and micro wireless facilities containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 226, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, an ordinance amending ordinance number 645186730968206, authorizing the execution of escrow trust agreement by and between the city, UMB Bank prescribing the form and details of said escrow, authorizing the release of unnecessary funds from the Argyle Special Allocation Funds and other related actions and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 227, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, an ordinance relating to underground requirements set forth in Chapter 23.42 of the Revised Code repealing Section 23.42.01023.42.030 through 23.42.050 and 23.42.070 of the Revised Code expanding the scope and applicability of the Underground District. Board Bill 228, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer, an ordinance approving the petition to amend the petition to establish the Laconia Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose for the petition to amend the petition to establish the Laconia Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 229, sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance repealing Section 1 of Ordinance 4889, codified in Section 8.10.060 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis pertaining to the payment and discount of a tax imposed on cigarette merchants and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 1 of Ordinance 48889. Board Bill 230, sponsored by Alderman Moore, pursuant to Ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Ms. Norma Jean Bellway, which shall begin at the intersection of Lexington and North Newstead and run west on Lexington to the intersection of Lexington and Clarence. Board Bill 231, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance enacting pursuant to Section 56.540, Revised Statutes of Missouri, to repeal Ordinance Number 70056 relating to the Office of Circuit Attorney of the city allocating the positions established by Section 56.540, Revised Statute of Missouri, to classes with grades and a schedule-setting minimum and maximum salaries for such grades by repealing Section 2 and replacing said section providing with salaries to be paid bi-weekly providing for payment of overtime wages subject to the requirement of Fair Labor Standard Act and shall be allowed on the base of hours worked and the bi-weekly rate of pay and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Alderman from the third.
Mr. President, we'd like to suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill 232.
It's been moved, the bill is on everyone's desk.
Yes, sir.
It's been moved by Alderman from the third that we suspend our rules for the purposes of the introduction of Board Bill.
232.
232. It's been seconded by Alderman from the twenty-first. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Martin, I'm sorry, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Con, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Martin, Alderman Howard, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Con. Twenty-six, aye votes and one no vote.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the third, and brought Board Bill 232 to the first reading calendar. Madam Clerk, please read the forward on 232.
Board Bill 232, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance authorizing the Circuit Attorney's Office to assume responsibility for investigating possible criminal conduct arising from or in relation to a covered officer's involvement in use of force incidents relating in death or grave bodily injury to a person occurring in the City of St. Louis and investigating possible bribery of public officials and city employees codified in Chapter 15.02 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis and establish an independent investigation unit within the Office of Circuit Attorney for this purpose with an annual budget of eight hundred and fifty thousand of the annual budget of the City of St. Louis Division Police Department, City of St. Louis Division of Police, and containing the sunset provision and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
Board Bill 222, I'm sorry, to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 222, 223, 183, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 224, 225, 227, and 230, to the HUD's Committee, Board Bill 226, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 228, and 229, and to the Public Employee Committee, Board Bill 231. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill 232 to public safety.
So noted.
Second reading.
The following bills were reported out of the Streets and Traffic and Refugees Committee, Board Bill 185, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of McCaslin and Bancroft regulating all traffic traveling, eastbound and westbound on Bancroft, at McCaslin regulating all traffic traveling, northbound and southbound on McCaslin at Bancroft and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance pertaining to the permit fees established pursuant to city bike share policy established and authorized by the St. Louis Ordinance 70710, establishing a micro mobility fund and requiring the permit fees collected pursuant to the city bike share policy to be deposited into a micro mobility fund. Board Bill 204, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, an ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 70892 pertaining to the establishment of procedures and requirements for the co-location and deployment of small wireless facilities in the right-of-way and city property by adding a new subsection L to Section 3 of Ordinance 70892 to permit the city to require reasonable technically feasible, non-discriminatory, and technological neutral design or consuming measures in a historic district and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 213, sponsored by Alderman Navarro, an ordinance pertaining to the parking within Skinker-Faciere Parking District, establishing the location and restrictions for curb parking in the restricted parking zone within the Skinker-Faciere Parking District, authorizing the placement of permit parking only signs within the district and prohibiting the parking within the district of any vehicle which does not display the authorized permit containing definitions of penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 214, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance repealing Number 70858 pertaining to the establishment of a two-way stop site at the intersection of Warrney and Lexington, establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Warrney and Lexington regulating all traffic traveling, northbound and southbound on Warrney, at Lexington and regulating all traffic traveling, westbound on Lexington at Warrney and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 9, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance to revise Ordinance 70736 approved March 2, 2018 pertaining to the collection administration citation fines assessed by the Building Commissioner containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 170, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Kennedy, and Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Circuit Attorney to enter into a contract.
Rest more order, please proceed.
With the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for funding to create a conviction integrity union within the Office of Circuit Attorney and authorizing the Circuit Attorney to expand the contract grant funds necessary to support this effort, including the hiring of personnel and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 189, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance approved and recommended by the Preservation Board and Planning Commission of the City pertaining to the Lafayette Square Historic District, amending Ordinance 699, I'm sorry, 69112, repealing and replacing certain standards for the Lafayette Square Historic District as set forth herein. The following board bills were reported out of the HUD's Committee, Board Bill 96, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2200 through 2218, Washington. Board Bill 177, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial department revenue bonds, Series 2018, in a principal amount of not to exceed seventy-five million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring certain equipment for an industrial project, development project, approving a plan for such project, authorizing directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute certain documents related thereto. Board Bill 194, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Cottage, North Taylor, Maffet, and Cora. Board Bill 202, sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Merrimack, South Compton, Bates, and South Fran. Board Bill 207, sponsored by Alderman Koltar, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 200 North Fourth Street. The following board bills were reported out of the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 190, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a public works and improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, consisting of capital improvement projects to and from the terminal complexities, airfield structures, and facilities and associated airport structure facilities and environments, including certain snow equipment, vehicles, and other associated airport improvements. Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the comptroller and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, making certain findings with the respect to transfer up to thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of excess monies that the City of St. Louis, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund. Board Bill 193, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the comptroller to enter into and execute a second restated and amended lease agreement, Northern Track Site between the city and the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport and Bi-National Gateway Terminal, LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of State of Missouri granting to the leasing the right to occupy and use the leased premises consisting of approximately sixty-one point ten acres, and improvements thereon, commonly known as the Northern Track Site, which is more fully described in Section 201 and Exhibit A and Exhibit B of the lease agreement AL-094. In order to, A, demolish any existing improvements that are not retained improvements, B, construct new improvements in order to accommodate international cargo enterprises and other cargo operations and distribution facilities, C, develop and operate a fixed base operator facility, and D, perform all operations and functions that are incidental or necessary to such use and develop or authorize in the lease agreement AL-094, subject to and in accordance with the provisions of the lease agreement AL-094, authorizing and directing the mayor, the comptroller, and registrar, the city councilor, director of airports, and other appropriate officers, agents, and employees of the city containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Ways and Means. Board Bill 215, committee sub, sponsored by Alderman Koltar, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city a gross receipt tax to be imposed on telecommunications and fiber networks providers as set forth herein, providing for an election to be held therefore and the manner of voting thereat and upon passage of said ballot, measure and amendment to City Ordinance 67717 is codified in Section 23.34.020 of the Revised Code of the Cities and Sections 23.34.010 through 23.34.030 of the Revised Code reflecting gross receipts tax to be imposed as approved by voters, establishing a telecommunications gross receipts tax fund and requiring the gross receipt tax collected pursuant to Sections 23.34.010 through 23.34.030 of the Revised Code to be deposited into the telecommunications gross receipt tax fund to be appropriated and expanded to the further smart city initiatives in the city. That is the extent of second reading.
We would dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill 101, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, an ordinance pertaining to the Al's Restaurant located at 1200 North First Street, having as subject matter the designation of property as a city landmark containing definitions, landmark standards, and a severability clause. Board Bill 161, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance pertaining to the Special Use District, establishing the Lafayette Square Area Special Use District, and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize under motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signal five percent, aye.
Aye.
Polls, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 143, committee sub, Board Bill 148, committee sub, Board Bill 159, Board Bill 165, committee sub, Board Bill 178, Board Bill 179, and Board Bill 181.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize under motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Con, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Green, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Con. Twenty-four aye votes.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 226 in Ways and
So noted.
Reporter of enrollment.
We have none.
Reporter of enrollment committee.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry, it was on the wrong one. Board Bill 143, committee sub, Board Bill 148, committee sub, Board Bill Board Bill 159. Board Bill 165, Committee Sub. Board Bill 178. Board Bill 179. And Board Bill 181.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions count.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move to adopt the courtesy resolution calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 19th, entertain the second on that motion. Second, second by Alderman from the 27th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 221, sponsored by Alderman Ingrassia, encouraging disability inclusion.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on first reading, Resolution 221.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution 221 go to Health and Human Services.
Been moved by Alderman from the 6th, that we send Resolution 221 to Health. Second by Alderman from the 7th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Please, Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 221 to Health.
So noted. Resolution 223, sponsored by Alderman Coulthard, intent to seek funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Madam Clerk, please hold on 223. We're going to allow the Alderman from the 7th to suspend the rules for its introduction. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have moved to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 223 from the floor, copy of which has been placed on all of your desks.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 6th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Previous roll.
We, the previous roll was a voice vote. We'll do a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingrassia. Alderman Coulthard. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Muhammad. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Rice. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Muhammad. Twenty-six aye votes.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 7th, and introduce Resolution 223. Madam Clerk, please place Resolutions 223 on the first reading resolutions calendar and read the forward into the record.
So noted. Resolution 223, sponsored by Alderman Coulthard, intend to seek funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the first reading, Resolutions 223.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous consent on Resolution 223.
Here are no objections. Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This resolution is pretty simple. We're just seeking to use some languishing state money that was given by the federal government for the purpose of disaster relief from flooding to make some repairs to the very old, very desperately in need of repair cobblestone streets on the landing. So, the Department of Economic Development has asked us to pass a resolution simply saying that we'd like to use this money from the state to redo these streets on the landing, specifically First Street from the Eads Bridge to MLK, the cobblestones in between. So, I would request, I would move to adopt Resolution 223.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, entertain the second. Second by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
Resolution 203, sponsored by Alderman Coulthard, St. Louis Parking Company and the City of St. Louis, enhance an enterprise zone.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the second reading of Resolution 203.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to adopt Resolution 203.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, entertain the second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading resolution.
Ms. Lane's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, January 21, 2019, the office will be closed in honor of Martin Luther King holiday. Tuesday, January 22, Streets Traffic and Refugees, 9:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Wednesday, January 23, HUDs meeting, 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, January 24, Ways and Means, 9:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Legislation, 10:00 a.m. in the leisure room. And Friday, January 25, is the full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I will have a committee hearing on Wednesday, January 23, at 10:00 a.m. on Resolution Number 221.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the 18th.
Yes, Mr. President, we're calling a Public Safety Committee meeting for Thursday at 11:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the 1st.
So, the board, I want to say belated happy Martin Luther King's birthday since we are celebrating it Monday and Tuesday. I am appalled at what is going on with these newscasters who somehow think that Coon and King sound the same. They do not. That is not an accident. The reason why you are so comfortable with letting the word "Coon" come out of your mouth is because you and your friends are at home saying that, and your mouth is speaking faster than your brain can stop yourself. I do not believe that these are accidents, and I think Martin Luther King heard those words when he was growing, when he was marching for our rights. That's what they called him. That's what Bull Connor and other people called him when he was marching for our rights. And I accept the newscaster's apology from Channel 2, and I hope they terminate him because he needs a more severe consequence than I'm sorry, because that's what you're saying at home.
Yeah. Any further, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 3rd.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to the people in the crowd and our board members this morning that there is a lot going on in our country right now. I know you already have an idea of what's happening. We are considered one of the most dangerous cities in the entire United States, and in the next month, we don't know exactly how more dangerous our city can get based on the things that are happening with our presidential administration. We have a lot of people who will be, and could possibly be, very hungry come April or come the end of March. The city can get very dangerous based on people doing what they need to do to survive over the next few months. So, we need to do what is necessary as a board and people who come to the Board of Aldermen to do what we can to at least have some type of plan in place. It's really, really quick. I don't know if that's possible, but at least the thought can be in the back of everybody's minds. We got millions of churches within this city. We got thousands of non-for-profit organizations who are asking for funding on a regular basis to be able to help solve some of the issues that plague our city. So, I think this is a particular time where we need to show strength in making sure that the citizens in this city who are utilizing government services are protected and at least looked at as, we need to consider what will happen to those individuals who will be affected by our government being shut down. So, I just want to make that plug in everybody's ear. I've talked to a few churches in my ward. Not sure exactly what the action plan is going to be yet, but we all can come up with something. We all can think about ways that we can protect our city in the months to come, or at least protect the citizens that are here from, I think, a government, and I think we can say a rogue government, or however you want to put it. There are people who support the war, people who don't. Not here to really go into detail about that, but we do need to figure out something because if we do not, there will be a lot of murders, homicides, or more importantly, people that are hungry, starving, or out on the streets in the next month or two. So, I just wanted to put that out in everybody's ear. I know we are trying to figure out what to do for our wards. We need to look at what we can do for our citizens so we can retain the ones that we have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to invite everyone this weekend out to the Loop Ice Carnival in the Delmar Loop. It'll be Saturday and Sunday. Free events, ice slides, human snow globes, jugglers, Ferris wheel. So, it's going to be cold, but we've got a great way to have some fun. So, bring out the family this weekend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 2nd.
Thank you. We will be having Eagle Days in the 2nd Ward at the Old Chain Rocks on the 19th and the 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There will be live eagerness replicas, educational programs. We're going to have warming tents, and there will be a Lewis and Clark reenactment. So, please come out. It's family-friendly. Have a great time, and come warm.
All along from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I was inspired by the Aldermen from the 3rd Ward to talk about how we can do better. I was fortunate yesterday to listen to Martin Luther King III talk about the same thing. And it's most important that, if nothing else, we get outside of ourselves because politics has become too messy. Politics is not supporting communities and people and their needs. We really need to do something different. So, a lot of the nonprofits here in the City of St. Louis have chosen to do that and connect the dots. And as we move forward in the next couple of months, you'll see some strong leadership come forward. Some of you probably have already heard about some of the partnerships that are forming now to make sure that all services are covered on a much higher level. And as we continue to talk about these issues here, if nothing else, we really need to make sure that we are volunteering ourselves and that we are getting everybody that we know who have resources to help our communities. Now, we may not be able to influence the White House at this moment, but we can influence them in the next election because if they want to play games with our lives, then they need to go home. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Madam Clerk, you have a change?
Yes, it's been brought to my attention that Ways and Means is not at 9:00 a.m., but it's at 10:00 a.m. So, that's Thursday, January 24, 10:00 a.m., Ways and Means in the leisure room.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce a Neighborhood Development Committee meeting for Tuesday at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you all. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 17th.
Mr. President, we, I announced previously that we're starting to do a bit of an education piece at the beginning of each of the HUDs meetings. We started out two weeks, a week and a half ago with our own Professor Hollins. Last week, we had Dr. Purnell, and we're having Dr. Hollins come back this next week to talk about expenditures, city expenses. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the 8th is excused for necessary absence.
It's moved by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, January 25, 10:00 a.m.
Move by Alderman from the 18th, second by Alderman from the 10th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, stand adjourned.